I see Steve.
Yep, here.
I see Andy, I see Emily.
Doug's here.
Joe, I got Lay.
Joe's here.
Doug's? Okay, well, we've got a quorum.
Good.
Kathy, are you here?
Kathy is not on the line yet.
Okay, well, let's, we'll.
We have another candidate.
Steve, Steve here, Steve there.
Yeah.
Nathan, are you there?
Nathan joined too. Yep, Nathan just joined, it looks like.
Okay, hi Nathan.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, hi Nathan.
Hey Steve, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Surviving.
Okay, six, seven o'clock, June 25th. Welcome, everybody. We had, we're gonna have three public hearings and we'll talk about that after we get through. Let's see, are they, what order are they?
We have PEMCO first.
Yeah, PEMCO first.
Oh, well, that's.
Yeah, then, I said, Alpha, then, then I start with Alpha, Magnum and Project Orange. Okay, all right, we're good. We had one work session with Project Orange. Nick, do you have anything scheduled for our next meeting in July?
Peter, there are no work sessions scheduled for the July 7th work session.
July 7th, I bet they're all on vacation. Okay, that's good. We had the, the minutes were distributed. Do we have any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, could we have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll move.
State your names.
Doug.
Doug and Nathan.
Nathan will second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. The minutes are approved. Okay, who do we have for PEMCO, Brooklawn, the remodel of existing entryways and parking lot improvements in High Tech District?
Terry Horst from Terry Horst Landscape Architecture.
Hi Terry.
Hi.
Congratulations on your ZBA approval.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for putting us on the agenda first. Thank you.
Anything we can do to help you and Peter? I think we've been through this, just, we, we had taken a straw poll to make sure that everything was in line with what we had reviewed. Emily, did you have anything new in addition to this? I think there was something that needed to be put on the plans.
We had asked for a note on the plans just about that ZBA approval, which was provided.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will read the motion for PEMCO, Brooklawn Entry Renovations. Motion to approve the plan is presented with the finding that the applicant has received a parking variance from the ZBA for the parking reductions as recommended by this board. And this plan shows the same and the SACBA resolution of 4820 has been reviewed and same finds no significant negative inter-community or countywide implications from this project. Approval is, is made with the following conditions. This motion is made with the, approvals made with the following conditions, following additional condition. This approval is for plans and other site document, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant. Requires that all work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance be issued. Any proposed changes, additions or deletions to the scope of work or materials for the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the town of DeWitt. Code section 192-122. That's the motion?
Shorter move.
Steve, thank you. All in favor?
Nathan will second.
Second. Nathan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Kathy, welcome.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we got, we're gonna go out of order here, just, it's, it's our privilege. Chairman's right here. It's represented for Apple Cross, is it?
So Terry, it's all set then? Okay.
Okay, do you wanna make a call?
Yeah, so is anyone here for Apple Cross? I talked to Dan Schulman earlier, I don't know if he was gonna come on or not. Okay, so, so Apple Cross, you may recall, this is a final plan and the request was sent in advance. Our engineer and, and Andy's office has looked over the final plan. Now that all of the lots are done, we, they're putting the lot lines in and all the subdivision requirements have been met. Andy just had a request with, with respect to, what was it? The basin planting, so.
Cleaning. Okay, yep, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the final subdivision plan is presented herein with the following findings. This final plan, which includes the quote "as-built" structure therein, has been reviewed and is found to be in substantial conformity with the preliminary plan for the cluster subdivision is approved by the board in September 22nd, 2005. And as such, preliminary plan was revised and approved on 12th to 2010 with a condition that the basin is shown in the plan must be cleaned out, seeded, no later than 60 days from the date thereof or same will be completed by the town, cost to the owner and for the security being held by the town on the subdivision. May have a motion to approve.
I'll move it, Peter.
Okay, second. Kathy?
I'll second.
Joe seconds.
Joe. Hey Peter.
Yes.
Question. Sorry, we're, we're really approving this as an as-built document, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, Peter, another question?
Yes.
Does this, has the bond been released or will this release the bond?
It has not been released.
Until, it won't be released until the basin is done.
It won't be released until the basin is completed.
Yep. Okay.
But all the town, all the town requirements as far as topping road and all that, that's all that's done.
Everything's been completed, Joe.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open, it is 7:05. I'm gonna open the first public hearing, site plan review modifications for reclaimed quarry site, ITech District for Alpha Omega LLC. I'm gonna, is okay with the applicant if I waived the reading of the notice?
That's fine with us.
Okay. And who do we have representing?
Yeah, this is Ed Kaplinger, Kaplinger Freeman Associates, also on the line, should be Rich Rusally of Alpha Omega and Mike Fogel of Brown Duke and Fogel.
Okay, welcome, Rich.
What was the last name?
What was the last name? That was, that was a little quick.
Mike Fogel.
Mike Fogel, okay.
F-O-G-E-L.
Okay. Do you wanna give a short summary of the?
Okay, yeah, this project will consist of the redevelopment of a portion of the former Alpha concrete plant and quarry in Jamesville off Ogle Road. The purpose of the project is to fill the former quarry area at the northwest part of the parcel to create a developable piece of land and to address general safety concerns with the excessive slopes that exist there now. There are no new buildings or paved areas associated with the project. The overall parcel area is 127 acres in size. The former quarry portion of the site where the grading and filling will occur is about 65 acres in size. This area is delineated with the green shading or hatching. This area, this former quarry area has been reclaimed and closed to DEC standards. The eastern portion of the site, which is out of the non-green shaded area, that contains existing silos and buildings and this will not be part of the, of this action. These buildings and facilities are currently being used and leased to tenants. The former, or the, the project area is bounded on the north and west sides by National Grid property or properties, on the east side by residential properties along Ogle Road and then on the south side by Clark Reservation. The filling and grading will occur in four phases over the next five years or so. About 2 million yards of material, mainly hard fill, will be brought into the site in place to meet the final grades shown on the plans. The four phases consist of filling, the first phase would be the north, the northeast portion of the property behind the Ogle Road residential properties. And this is where there's a very deep hole, it's adjoins the residential properties and we'll be addressing safety concerns there expressed by the residents. And that, the second phase would be the northwest corner of the site, again, another very deep hole with excessive slopes. This would address safety concerns. The third phase would be the southwest portion, which again is another deep hole and this would address safety concerns. And the last phase would be general filling and grading of the entire area to meet the final grades and then site stabilization. Some highlights as far as that would be associated, this would be mainly associated with Phase 1. There'd be an installation of a job trailer at the site entrance. This job trailer would have, would contain a dedicated property manager who would control access to the quarry, would track all materials entering the site and then handle any of the SWIP and drainage issues. He would also address any concerns from the town or neighbors and he would be here for the duration of the filling project. The other highlight of this, of the first phase would be the addition of an expanded berm area with tree plantings along the residential properties. So that's the overview of what we're looking to do. Any questions?
Ed, I got a quick question for you.
Yeah.
What's the length of time you project for Phase 1 for completion? I mean, just a.
I think we're looking to get on it as soon as we get approved and it would be done this year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but we're gonna handle that right away.
Yeah, we're hoping to get it done during this construction season, but I would say 12 months.
12 months, okay. No, we just wanna have it for the record.
Ed, this is all clean hard fill, right? We're not, something.
Yes, it would all be tested, or it would be, it would be, well, it would be, yes, clean hard fill, yes.
Okay, Phase 2?
The timing for Phase 2?
Yeah, what is it?
Oh, boy, I guess it started after Phase 1, so it'd be starting next year. But I mean, I, I don't, as far as timing goes, I don't know. A lot of this is dependent on fill availability. If there's a lot of construction activity, it'll go, it'll, you know, this site could be developed much quicker. If there isn't fill material available, it could, it could take much longer than five years.
Okay, all right.
And you opened by saying future development of this site. Is, is there a plan for future development of this site?
Not with the current owner. They're, they're just, their intent is to fill the property and then potentially put it on the market.
Do we have any other questions?
Is there a SWIP for this or no? A SWIP?
There is. We, we will be submitting a new package on Monday, which will contain the SWIP drainage report and updated plans.
Ed, I've got a question for you, please. Can you just summarize?
Thank you, sorry.
I can barely hear you, Lay.
All right, I'm trying. Can, can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes.
A little better.
Yes.
Could you just summarize what the conditions are along with Clark Reservation, Park Side? Other than that, anybody in the reservation is looking up at a big mountain or down a hill? What, what is, can you describe that condition when we finish?
Oh, well, okay, the, what will happen is the, if you're at the Clark Reservation property, the grades will be at or below the existing grades that occur along the north and the, the north and west properties. There won't be, the grades won't be elevated above the, those, well, that, naturally that land is higher than the quarry and it, we won't be above those elevations. In fact, we'll probably be below those elevations in most areas.
All right, so the Clark Reservation property, even when we're done, those contour lines are descending down into the fill. Is that correct?
Correct, correct, yes. They're, they're actually draining onto this property.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we weren't gonna create any issues with drainage and we're, we're, where we put the, there's three low areas. Northeast corner, northwest corner and southwest corner and they're all lower than any of the Clark Reservation proper.
Any other questions from the board?
Andy, did you have a question or is that just an errant hand?
No, I, I do have a question. My question is really concerning the fly ash that's under the covered storage building. Is that a possible product that, it hasn't seemed to move in years? Sorry about that.
You know. You're a bulldog.
Technology, you know, good security system. Is that a product that can actually be put into the, into the fill area or is that something that is not acceptable as fill material for this, this condition? I'd like to see that gone if we, that was supposed to be gone like 10 years ago.
Hey. Yeah. Not plans to do that, but we've been working closely with the form of beneficial uses for that ash, so.
We're working on it.
Andy, what's the basis that it was supposed to have been gone 10 years ago?
That was actually, I believe, a requirement of the specific use permit when they were going, when Crehensville Block was going for use with the silo storage, that, that fly ash was supposed to be removed.
Well, we could check the records and we'll have to, we'll, we'll need to deal with that, Rich, and add, if it's supposed to be removed, then it, then it'll need to be removed. But this is a informational hearing, so there will be no approval until the next meeting, we can address it. Between now and then. Any other questions? Is there anybody in the meeting that is a member of the public or a neighbor?
Mike Riley, I'm a member of the public, but I have no particular interest in the quarry project.
Okay.
I, this is Gordon. I do have some interest in this project in relation to Clark Reservation site and the, the wetland that is south of this site. I'm on a volunteer board for the nature center at the, at the Clark Reservation. The, I'm wondering if there's drainage away from the site into the, the wetlands on the south?
Currently, the site drains internally to the deep areas and we will continue those drainage patterns only with the fill on elevating the site. But the intent is to not drain, or not the intent, we will not be draining to the south, to the wetlands. We are collecting all the drainage and infiltrating it onsite.
Onsite is unconsolidated material, or at least that's what was extracted from the quarry, is that correct? And, and is there drainage then down through the unconsolidated material that would have neighboring wetlands?
Well, this is all fill material being placed and we're going to have to be, and right now this, the site accepts all the drainage that falls within the site. So we will be, when we put material and we'll have to be cognizant of placing permeable material in the drainage areas where the stormwater management facilities will be installed.
Did county planning have any comments relating to this project?
They, is their current, I don't, they.
Peter, this is, this is Nick. They are currently reviewing the document and will be issuing comments.
Okay.
They'll be issuing notes?
I'm gonna pull up my schedule right now. They should be coming July 1st.
July 1st, okay, great.
We have, we sent out a seeker.
Yeah.
And that's probably, so until the second meeting and so on.
Okay, so we did send out a seeker and so we'll need to, we'll have to address this at the second meeting in July. Any other questions by the board? Or members of the public?
I just remind people that you are by default muted, so if you're trying to speak, you might need to unmute yourself first.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's, it's helpful and we'll check through the, that. Andy, I'll ask you and Nick to check the requirements and Jamie from the 10 years ago and, and then we'll be moving forward with this, wanna get this. And the county comments and, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next.
I have a question on these public hearings.
Yes.
Do, do, is there a window of time for the public to submit comments, given the unique nature of our meetings here?
Well, we've always accepted comments, Steve, written and, and value them. So I would say no unless, well, I would just say no, that people are, members of the public and whether they're neighbors or just residents of the town of DeWitt are welcome to bring forth any comments they wish to and we should address them as a board.
So do we have a deadline for those comments?
No, I mean, it's, we publicize the agenda beforehand and it's on the, you know, the town website. So I don't know any other, any other thing we can do relative to the comments. We, we did send out the, the notice of this informational hearing on all three projects, so. And published.
Well, it's just that, you know, the, the whole, the whole internet process can be intimidating to a lot of public. So we might wanna underscore that comments are acceptable by mail.
Yeah, I would say, and email. And I would say anytime before that second meeting in July, when we'll make a, a recommendation and a, and a vote. Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Where was that noticed in the, was that noticed in the paper? The public hearings?
It was.
Okay. I only was aware of it online and, you know, I'm concerned about people that aren't computer literate that are, you know, elderly that might have an interest, like Mr. Schroder's.
Right. It also hit, met the, any neighbors within 500 feet of the property line.
Okay, thank you.
We sent out a, a mail as well as the, the notice.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks Gordon. We've got two more and we're gonna combine them. The Magnum Properties, Subdivision Project Orange, since it's an informational hearing, we, we wanna bring that. Are there any members of the, of the public that have an interest in this? Just so we know if you're in the audience.
Mike Riley and Kathy Riley do.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so Mike and Kathy, we're gonna, the applicant's gonna give a summary of the project and after that point, you're welcome to ask any questions that you wish. And if there were any other people to come on, we just ask that we stay, you know, on point and, and, but feel free to ask any questions relating to the project that you wish.
Absolutely.
We'd like to waive the notice for the, the reading. Is, is that acceptable to the applicant? For Magnum and the Project Orange?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is, Peter.
All right, thank you. So would you like to start with the, you know, we're opening the public hearing. A motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Go.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doug.
Public hearing is now open. The other one was closed. That was quick. You, you missed it, you missed it. The, who, 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 let's take the lead on Project Orange in terms of the applicant.
This is Byron DeLuque with Montante Construction and all. Hi, hi Peter and hello to everyone from the board. It's good to see you all again, just remotely. I also have a couple other folks, I think, on the call today. I can't see everyone that has called in, but I believe that Rob Peters from Montante Construction as well as Jason Utzig with CNS and Nadine Bell with Castello, Cuni and Fierum are all on the, on the line as well. In terms of Magnum Properties, I believe that Marco Marzaki is also on the phone. But I will be the one to just kinda run, running folks through both the subdivision and the site plan and then everyone on the team is ready to jump in and answer questions as they come up.
Okay.
So, so I guess I'll start, just, again, I know I already said it, but for the record, so it's clear, my name is Byron DeLuque with Montante Construction. And as was mentioned, there are two hearings tonight on, informational hearings on Project Orange. The first of those hearings is related to subdivision. And to take a step back, overall, Project Orange is a proposal to develop and build an approximately, approximately 112,000 square foot warehouse and distribution facility off of Kirkville Road in the town of DeWitt. The location, proposed location for the facility, as folks can see, at, at least if you can see on the screen in front of you, is, is on a portion of an approximately 72 acre site that is currently owned by Magnum Properties. The Magnum Properties site, to be clear, actually consists currently of six individual tax parcels. And the proposed subdivision plan that, that is in front of the board will result in those six parcels being re-subdivided or, or combined, if you will, into two remaining lots. What we're referring to there is Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 2, which is the, you know, it's actually the eastern side of the site, is the.
I just wanna interrupt for a second, I apologize. Can Riley see the, the screen? Can they able to see the map?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just, thank you. Go ahead, I apologize. I just wanna be sure that we all had access to the information.
We're here at your pleasure, Peter. I'm sure you can interrupt as often as you want. So Lot 2 there on that map is an approximately 42 acre parcel and that is the parcel that is proposed for Project Orange. The remaining parcel just to the east of that is Lot 1 and that is an approximately 32 acre parcel. That's the residual land that will be retained by Magnum Properties for their own future development purposes.
I think that's to the west.
Lot 1 was.
Lot 1 is to the west.
That's right, yes.
Closest to 481. Closest to 481.
That's right, 41 is immediately to the west of Lot 1. So importantly, while right now it's our understanding that the folks over at Magnum don't have any specific plans for development of Lot 1, I want to make sure I mention for the hearing, for purpose of the hearing today, that primary access to Lot 1 will be provided through a joint access road. And Nick, I don't know if you can zoom in at all right above where it says Lot 2. It is on the subdivision, the location of that joint access road. It's kind of hard to see. But that proposed joint access road, which is located on Lot 2, will provide access to the remaining Magnum Property lot. As a result, a joint access easement is going to be provided basically along the entire length of that proposed access drive. And Magnum retains the, the right to access, the right to provide access to the remaining development parcel, basically anywhere along that entire boundary, where that joint access agreement is going to be put in place. Again, you can see the location we proposed for that joint access drive right there on the, the edge of the property boundary. So importantly, because, because the subdivision includes both parcels and more importantly, the joint access road provides access to Lot 1, which is the Magnum Property site. The transportation impact study that was done for the project as part of Seeker Review did include an analysis of potential development impacts associated with the future development of that parcel by Magnum. And actually, if the board would, you know, forgive me, I'd like to back up for a minute. I probably should have started with this, but just to make a brief comment on Seeker and the Seeker Review for the project. An environmental review under Seeker began shortly after the initial submissions for this project in January and February to both the town and the county agencies involved. The county was deemed lead agency for purposes of a coordinated review that did involve other agencies, including, of course, this body here today. And it included a lengthy, hard look at both the subdivision and the site plan proposals that we're talking about today. The, the county did just on Tuesday of this week, on the 23rd, issue a negative declaration under Seeker. So Seeker Review was completed by the county earlier this week after starting back in January and February on the project. So-
Upstairs.
So that is the, you know, that's really it on subdivision. That's all I wanted to talk about related to the subdivision proposal and subdivision map. Peter, you mentioned, obviously, there are two hearings. I don't know if you want to stop now and, and take comment on subdivision or if you'd like me to just go right on to-
You're on a roll. Keep going. We're combining the two.
Okay, so, thank you, Nick. So the image that Nick just scrolled up onto the screen is the updated overall site plan proposal for Project Orange itself. And this, this image represents an updated drawing that was submitted last week and is one of several iterations that we've been able to work with the planning board on over the last several months. Just at a high level to introduce the project. Again, it's about 112,000 square foot facility. The building itself is in the center of the site. Here I am pointing at my screen like you can see what I'm pointing at, but it's the gray block in the middle of the, the drawing. Thank you, Nick. And that's about 112,000 square feet. The facility itself houses both offices and warehouse space. And it is going to be utilized by our client, which is a, a national e-commerce company for purposes of processing normal, normal goods and consumer goods, products, merchandise for purposes of last mile delivery in the Syracuse, DuWitt area. The, as you can see from the site plan, the building is surrounded by several different banks and parking. There are two major entrances to the site, both located off Kirkville Road. And several hundred employees will be, will be employed by the, by the company at this facility. That does not include or take into account the additional employees that are the additional delivery drivers that will be working for the company and delivering those goods to the local businesses and households and community. So in terms of the operation itself, one of the things that is, is mentioned in the notice for the hearing tonight on site plan is that this is a 24/7 facility, meaning it does operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. However, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the majority of the daily operations at this facility do happen during the daytime hours, the significant majority. Additionally, I should mention that shift changes at the facility are going to be coordinated to occur during off-peak hours, off-peak times, specifically with an eye toward offsetting employee vehicular traffic with the other traffic that currently exists along Kirkville Road. You'll see that generally the facility is located at the center of the site. The two entrances are located off of Kirkville. The main entrance for purposes of both truck and delivery vehicle traffic is the entrance that is across from Roberts Street. Thank you. You can see the cursor right there. This is the entrance that trucks are going to access and leave the site from. You'll see that as they enter the site, they'll drive to the rear of the building, which is where the truck docks have been located. Goods will be offloaded in that section of the building into the warehouse where they'll be sorted and prepared for loading onto delivery vans on the western side of the building, where you can see the van queuing and loading areas. The vans, once they're loaded up, will also be pulling out back onto the, the shared access drive and exiting and entering primarily again off of that intersection at Roberts Street. So the parking area located directly to the north of the building, which is adjacent to Kirkville Road, is meant for the company associates that has 200, 242 spaces in it, I believe, 240, 242 spaces. Again, for the associates that work at the facility. All of the parking located to the east and wrapping around to the south of the facility is meant for the delivery vans themselves. Nick, do you mind, we'll come back to this image. Do you mind going to the, the rendering? Thank you.
Byron, so just to clarify, Emily Garavuso is controlling the screen, so if you-
Well, thank you, Emily, for the help and apologize, Nick. I'm so demanding over here and you're not even doing it. Okay, thank you, Emily. So the, here are the building elevations that show the front of the facade as well as the, the rear, and that's the, the truck loading areas. We thought that this image would be the, the right one to start with for, for purposes of this hearing. Of course, the, the board has, has seen and worked through several iterations of these, these building elevations with us, kicking off meetings, workshops with, with this board back in January, February and March, talking about these building elevations. And I, I just would say, I don't have a lot to comment on here as much as I wanted to thank the board and just reference the fact that we feel that there was a lot of collaboration to try to work with us and meet the needs of the client while, I believe, making some significant changes to the facade and ending up with a good-looking project that's consistent with the zoning and design standards for, for this site. So really, that's all I wanted to focus. I wanted to pull it up for purposes of the hearing, but also wanted to, to reference the good work by this board over the course of several months with us to help us get to a much better design in the end. So in addition to this, I know I'm running a little long here. I would like to mention just a couple of other items I think might be interesting for any members of the public that are listening in. Emily, do you mind going back to the, the overall site plan? So obviously, we don't have time to go through everything we've talked about with this board over the last, you know, several months here. But again, I think there are certain items that might, might be worth noting for the public. One that I want to note, right now, as I mentioned, there are two entrances off of Kirkville and the van loading and queuing areas on the western side of the site next to the joint access road. Early on, in our concept review, we proposed a plan that had four entrances off of Kirkville and that van queuing and loading was actually flipped. The entire building orientation was, was the exact opposite. And so that's something that we've, we've worked with this board to reduce. Now there are only two entrances onto Kirkville and that van loading and queuing area is actually on the, the western side of the site, which I think actually works out much better, as I'll allude to now and get into a little later with regard to traffic patterns at this site. Another thing that, that we, that we focused on, that this board really focused on early on was green space. And Emily, if you could zoom out as far as you could on this, so people can see the wetlands. So this is a site that is a very big site. It immediately is adjacent to, you can't really see a lot of it on the, on the map, but just off the site boundaries, you can see Butternut Creek is to the south and to the east of the site. Along with Butternut Creek, there are significant wetlands, both the EC and federal jurisdictional wetlands on the southern and eastern ends of the site. And so one of the goals that we set out to try to achieve, based on this board's guidance early on, was to minimize or eliminate entirely impacts to wetlands. We were able to do that, so this plan for the building does, for the building site itself, does completely avoid any wetland impacts. Indeed, the board has been, has been creative in working with us on solutions to also save as much of the buffer zone between the wetlands as possible, while also doing hopefully some additional buffer zone improvements between the wetlands on the southern end of the site and the project site itself. One thing I also want to mention, the board did ask for us to consider the placement of permanent environmental conservation easements on those wetlands that you can see on that map. We have agreed and are working to put in place permanent environmental easement on all of the remaining wetlands that exist on the Project Orange site. That's something that's going to be a condition of this project. Let's see. Another item I do want to bring up, just real briefly, is parking. There's a lot of parking associated with this project. It's a warehouse and logistics center with lots of delivery vans at that site. But again, we were able to work with the client and this board to reduce the parking by about 100 parking spaces total as part of this, part of this process. From the concept planned to now, we reduced it from just under 1,000 to just over 900 total spaces. And so I think that was another significant improvement in design. Finally, I'll finish up by talking real quickly about the TIS process because, again, I just think that that's something that, that folks are going to want to hear about. So as I mentioned earlier, a full transportation impact study has been completed for this project. The TIS did take a look, again, going back to the subdivision discussion because of that joint access road, not only at Project Orange and this development you see on, on the screen, but also took into account and consideration a maximum development scenario under the existing zoning classification for the Magnum Property site that remains to be developed in the future. That TIS basically concluded that Project Orange was not going to result in any significant reduction in level of service along Kirkville Road. However, and very importantly, the level of service for, for any driver's vehicles trying to exit the Project Orange site to get back onto Kirkville was below, well below acceptable standards. And in addition to that, in talking to both the state and the county DOT folks, they had, they had concerns about existing conditions along Kirkville that were related to traffic safety and indeed specifically accidents related to people turning left onto Roberts at that intersection. So as part of the, 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 the seeker process for this project with county and state DOT, off-site improvements were discussed and agreed to for Project Orange that basically include three things. First, an expansion of Kirkville Road in front of the Magnum Property site. That would, would allow the addition of a second eastbound traffic lane across the entire length of the project site. Second, the expansion of Kirkville to allow for dedicated left turn lanes at both entrances to the project site that you see on that image in front of you, as well as a dedicated left turn lane for eastbound traffic onto Roberts. Finally, the third off-site improvement that was recommended as part of the project and that we've agreed to is the installation of a traffic control signal at the intersection with Roberts. So at Kirkville and Roberts Street, a traffic control signal is going to be installed. The result of the off-site, and I should mention before I get into the results, importantly, this is important not just to the town, but also to the county and, and state folks. All of the off-site improvement project, it's a very significant project, is going to be paid for in full by, by the client. So this project in its entirety is privately funded.
You can go.
And no incentives are going to it. The public improvements are all going to be paid for by the client. So what's the result of that off-site improvement project as it relates to traffic? Well, importantly, one, it's, it accommodates the issues I mentioned earlier about level of service for people turning left onto Kirkville off of the project site. In addition, it increases capacity significantly along that corridor of Kirkville such that any future development proposed under the existing zoning classification for the remaining Magnum Property would be fully covered. And then finally, it improves upon the existing condition in terms of safety for drivers on Kirkville Road, particularly in terms of rear, rear end accidents at that intersection with Roberts Street. So overall, the, the off-site mitigation, the TIS was very robust and is going to result in a pretty significant improvement along that entire Kirkville Road corridor that'll be privately paid. There are other things I could talk about, but I think at this point, Peter, maybe I should just turn it back over to the board. I know at least two folks, I think, were, were hoping to make some comments or ask questions. So with that, I'll, I'll say thank you and, and open it up for additional commentary.
Yeah, I think-
Actually, before, this is Nadine Bell, before we do that, good evening. Just to make a real quick comment because, forgive me, but I don't think I heard Byron mention this. And I know this was something that was raised in one of the prior- And I know this was something that was raised in one of the prior matters on the agenda tonight. The subdivision and the site plan applications were both referred to the county planning board pursuant to 239. And we received comments back on the site plan in January of 2020 and on the subdivision in April of 2020. And there were modifications and comments offered and everything has been addressed. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we have gone through the 239 review process.
Thanks, Nadine. And Byron, thank you for your comprehensive report. I would open this up to the public and anybody that wants to speak. If there are more people besides Kathy Riley? Any questions that were not addressed that you'd like to hear from?
Yes. I'm happy to hear that the traffic concerns along Kirkville Road have been addressed. How far is your primary entrance at Robert Road, Roberts Road? How far east of the exit from 481 North? That ramp currently has a stop sign. It's no longer a yield sign and the state redid that recently. So it's a more perpendicular entrance into Kirkville Road, but vehicles have to come to a complete stop there. And I'm concerned that with the traffic control signal at Roberts Road now, as well as left turning, truck to trailers delivering and vans, the lineup is going to make exiting from 481, which that's a significant impact at rush hour. It's going to make it, you're going to back up onto 481.
So Rob, I'm not sure off the top of my head, Rob, how far exactly we are from 41. Perhaps you can look at that while I'm answering the question and pipe in when I'm done with the answer, if you can find it. But Mike, to get to your concern related to the proximity to I-41 and the redesign with the stop sign?
Yes, yes.
That redesign was taken into account as part of the traffic impact study. Indeed, the engineers over at C N S took a hard look at not just that redesign, but the queuing impacts that this project and indeed the installation of a traffic signal at Roberts could have on that off-ramp. That was, of course, also reviewed at length by the New York State D O T folks.
Okay.
So the results, long and short of the results of that analysis, they're in the T I S, but we're not going to impact, have an impact on that. Our queuing won't have a negative impact on that off-ramp in large part because of the addition of the second eastbound through lane. That's the reason really why we're adding that second eastbound traffic lane across the front of the project site because of the issue you just raised. So that's been reviewed by our traffic engineers as part of the P I S. New York State D O T also took a look at it and has signed off on the design.
Okay. Not very far east of Roberts Road, where there's a two-lane bridge that currently crosses the creek. I, you know, is the improvement going to go that far? Because you've got to have a breakdown lane to cross that and get back to the two-lane road. And that's going to be right around the area of Benedict Road, which is, it's not very far. I'm guessing that it's probably 200 feet, 300 feet.
So again, I'm not sure of the exact distances, Rob. Potentially, you can look that up as well.
Byron, this is Nathan with the board. To answer one of your earlier questions, it's about 520 feet from the off-ramp to Roberts Road.
Okay.
So we'll take a look. I think it's a little over 1,000 feet in the other direction, Mike, to get to the bridge.
Okay.
And that's a really good.
There's 45. So if you're going in the through lane, you're probably traveling anywhere between 40 and 55 miles an hour, based on anecdotal evidence, I'll say. So, you know, there's a lot going on now and there will be more going on as this project moves forward. And it's, as I said at the last meeting, I think I spoke with you, that, you know, it's a pretty primary school bus route.
Yeah. So I hear two comments there. If you don't mind, I'll try to address the creek crossing first and then I'll get back to what I believe is your question on the school bus route.
Yes.
So with regard to the creek crossing, we've worked again with the county D O T. C N S, I should say, has to design the off-site improvement project along Kirkville that, such that the merge from two lanes, eastbound back down to one lane, happens prior to that bridge. Such that we don't, our project is not going to include any additional fill along Butternut Creek itself or around that bridge itself. That crossing is, of course, at Butternut Creek. So I think that's the answer to your question on that. I will also say that the, and I probably should have mentioned this earlier, the T I S study, I mentioned it was reviewed and approved by the D O T. It's also been approved, reviewed and approved by the county D O T, as well as the off-site improvements project.
Okay. Has anybody from the local school district commented or had an opportunity to comment on that?
So I have talked to the local school district and the principal, and I'm apologizing to everyone on the phone and forgetting her name right now, but the. That's right, yes. And I've talked to them on a couple of occasions. Early on, when we first applied for the project, just to give them a heads up that we were doing a T I S. Then later on, as we finished the T I S and we realized we had to do a significant off-site improvement project along Kirkville. And so they have been informed, they're well aware, and their, you know, their major concerns, I think, at that time, they were happy to hear, just to be frank, on a couple of items. One, that the project was, the project itself was going to be privately funded and was not seeking incentives. So it's going to be fully on the tax rolls, which is important, obviously, for the community and for the school district. And then in addition to that, she was happy to hear that the project involves such a significant off-site improvement project for Kirkville that would result in an improved condition along that stretch for, as you mentioned, the important bus route that it is. The thing that we have committed to working with the school district going forward on, and I think that the last concern that they raised for us that we've committed to working with them on, of course, is construction and the timing of construction with that off-site improvement project. Of course, we, no one really knows where we're going to be in terms of the school year in the fall with COVID. I can say as a parent, my wife and I both work in homeschooling. We're kind of hoping, crossing our fingers, that schools are back open in the fall. But we don't know that. Having said that, we've committed to work with her and her team as we get into construction, get into the construction timeframe to ensure that we're doing everything we can, along with the county. Of course, it's a county project, but along with the county to try to alleviate any issues that that construction of Kirkville Road and the off-site improvement project might have on the school district and the buses for that time that it's under construction. In terms of the timeline for the road, you're looking at a two-, three-month construction timeframe likely once we start. So we're hoping that we'll be able to do that in tandem with construction of the project itself, should it be approved by this board and permitted, such that we can avoid the school year. But if we can't, then we've committed to keep them apprised, communicate regularly and make sure that we're working in tandem with them to alleviate any concerns that they have.
Perfect. Thank you. And one other question about the, you said there was going to be no site runoff to the creek. What's the approximate elevation difference between the site finished grade and the creek bank or Kirkville Road?
So Mike, to be clear, and I apologize if what I said earlier was misleading to you or anyone else listening. And so what I said earlier is that there's not going to be any fill impacts to wetlands, meaning we're not doing any construction in the wetlands, we're not filling any wetlands in. We're putting a conservation easement on them. They're going to retain as they are, or retain them as they are in perpetuity. Having said that, the site in its current condition already, you know, runoff already flows predominantly east, given the grading of the site, but to the south and east into the wetlands and eventually, obviously, making its way into Butternut Creek. That's a condition, we're not altering that condition as part of our grading plan for the site. All of the quantity, quantity, or quantity and quality for stormwater purposes is handled on the site itself. But eventually, everything will continue to be discharged to the south and east into the Butternut Creek.
So you have, you have onsite retention though?
That's right, yes.
Okay. Can you just show me where that is?
Sure. And, you know, I'll give you the high-level overview. If you have specific questions, then Jason, our engineer from C N S, can jump in and try to answer anything you might have. But so if you look at the project site, generally, a majority of, we're trying to treat a majority of the stormwater through bio-retention basins that are located throughout the site. And they're located on both sides of the building, to the south of the building. You can kind of see one where the cursor is right there. Emily is focused on one that's sort of an L-shaped up to the west side of the building.
Okay, yes.
But in terms of the, so that's handling most of the quality side of stormwater. In addition to that, there are three instances of filters that we're utilizing in the parking areas on the east and north of the site. All of this is acceptable practice by the D E C, best management practice. In terms of the quantity item, so the amount of stormwater that we have to store onsite for storm event, that's predominantly being handled with underground storage basin. You can see that parking, well, there's a parking lot, you know, for vans to the east of the site. And there's a large underground storage retention basin that's going to be installed under that parking area. Mike, again, you know, it's, if you can picture on the map, it's just to the east of the building itself.
Yeah, I can picture that. I can picture that.
Byron, this is Steve Schroeder. I have a question.
Yep.
Since we've just come off a speed of four days over 90 degrees, I'm concerned about the heat entropy generated by all this pavement and hard roofing surfaces. Do you have a preliminary landscape plan that shows how the parking lot is shaded?
Yes, Steve, there is a, we have submitted, we submitted both the preliminary landscape plan and then based on comments received by the board, we did update that plan in some significant ways, adding a lot of trees as required under code and design guidelines by this board throughout the site, not just along Kirkville, but, you know, also throughout those parking areas in the, there we go. You'll see, again, both along Kirkville and then in the medians and cells, along the edges of the property in the parking areas as well, trees, landscaping. We expanded the size of the medians. And so that landscaping plan you're looking at is just one small section of the drawings. But yes, we have submitted that and it's.
It does seem like there's a lot of medians that could benefit with the addition of some trees.
There we go. There's the overall, the overall plan. Now, again, this was, this was a revised plan that took into account comments received by the board related to both species of trees, as well as the quantity and location of the landscaping. So this is the.
Pretty sparse.
Steve, we're going to, we'll have three weeks to look at this in detail. So I want to move forward, but I appreciate the input.
I also, I brought this plan up because Mike Riley had asked about the underground storage. So this kind of shows that area.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Emily. That's excellent.
This is Gordon Heisler. Could I just ask a quick question?
Will we review this as a board in terms of the plannings and the numbers and species? Any other questions from the Rileys or anybody else?
Could I just, this is Gordon Heisler. Could I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
About the wetland areas. Are there provisions, there are going to be provisions that would monitor the conditions in the wetland over the, over future years? And are there, is there the ability on the site with the storage facilities and all of that to kind of monitor and change what inflow perhaps might go into those wetlands over a long period of time, you know, in the future for particularly big storm events or something?
So Jason, I don't know if you're listening, you know, maybe you can answer the second question. I'll answer the first question, which is related to wetlands. So Gordon, I believe it is. Gordon, the, as I mentioned before, we're not actually going to impact. Thankfully, we were able to redesign the site to avoid completely any fill impacts to the state or the core wetlands on the site. So as a result, we don't have any long-term monitoring requirements associated with wetlands. We will be, as I mentioned, placing a, we've agreed to the board request to place a conservation easement on those wetlands in perpetuity, even though we don't have a permit related to them, to do work in them. That's something that we've agreed to do. That'll protect them in perpetuity. As part of the off-site improvements project along Kirkville, we are also looking to minimize impacts, but are looking to do some improvements to that buffer zone that is located between the wetlands to the south of the project site and the parking area itself. Right now, that area is basically full of urban fill and, you know, invasive species. It doesn't perform very well in terms of functionality. And so we're proposing an improvement project on about one and a half acres in that buffer area to basically create a forested buffer zone that should significantly improve the long-term functionality of that area in terms of treating the runoff that's currently moving from the site down into that wetland. That's the answer to the first part of your question. Jason, again, I don't know if you're on or if you heard the second piece, which related to treatment?
Yeah, I am on. And Gordon, I apologize. If you could just repeat that question again, I'll try to answer that for you.
Just generally, there are plans to not do any development or modification of the wetland site. However, it seems that with such a large area adjacent to that wetland, that there could be some runoff issues, stormwater, particularly issues that might affect that wetland unintentionally. That is according to the current plans and the storage facilities and so forth onsite. So I'm just wondering if there wouldn't be some way to monitor somewhat like just elevations of water levels and so forth in the wetland and then perhaps modify the management onsite if there are unexpected changes.
Gordon, this is Rick Smart and I'm the chair, board chair, the Southern New York Land Trust.
Hi, Rick. Yes.
And we own the property just to the south and to the east, Butternut Swamp. So we would be happy to work with the folks in the development, both in terms of monitoring issues and improvements, as well as providing access, better access to our preserve. both in terms of monitoring issues and improvements, as well as providing access, better access to our preserve at that point.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
And this is Jason. Just to, I guess, clarify again, what Byron mentioned before, none of the site, none of the, the hard surface or the impervious areas from the site is going to be draining to those wetlands. Everything will be collected on our site, discharged to the bio retention areas or collected in catch basins and both treated onsite and then conveyed to the underground detention system, which ultimately discharges to Butternut Creek. So just to be clear, there, there's going to be no impervious areas that's, that are going to be draining directly to those wetlands. The only discharge point from the, from the site will be to Butternut Creek.
So that said, you can monitor the, the outfall at that point for chemical contamination to indicate a failure in your treatment process?
Correct. Yeah, there will be a pipe discharge to Butternut Creek that, that could be monitored, should that, should that need to be.
Okay, is that instrumentation included or is that a might happen if we need it?
Uh, that's technically, it's not a requirement per the DEC. As far as the, the best management practices that are shown on the site, these are standard best management practices that are approved by the DEC that, that are being employed onsite. So technically, it's not required because we're providing what's, what's standard practices.
Right. You're the last guy in and, and CSX has also got a lot of runoff from the rail yard that's I'm sure heading into that. So but being the last guy in, you're going to catch all the flak for anything that is unusual in there.
Yeah, and we have erosion sediment controls on place or shown on the plans during construction and so, yeah.
Any biodiesel or any of that kind of stuff that bypasses anything, be it from, from CSX or you is you're going to, you're the last guy in. So DEC comes knocking, they're going to knock on your door first.
That's understood, Mike. And, and as Jason said, Jason, I don't think I'm, I'm misspeaking here in saying that based on the, the practices and the, the stormwater management plan that we're, we're putting into place for the site, this represents an improvement over the existing condition. Yes?
Yes, I think that's a fair statement.
Could you explain in layman's terms and for the board what a conservation easement is?
Nadine, if you're on, that probably makes sense for you to answer that question. I'm going to put you on the spot.
No problem. This was something that was discussed at one of the work session meetings. And it was discussed that by having a conservation easement, there will not be, as Byron noted, it's into perpetuity. So the land that's put into that easement will remain, it will be conserved. It's exactly what it sounds like. It won't be built upon. It won't have improvements. It will remain as it is and serve the function that it's supposed to serve.
So does that permit public access?
Well, you wouldn't want public access typically in wetlands. That's not something to be, you know, that's not really recreational. So no, the conservation easement is not intended, at least as was discussed during the work session meetings. It wasn't discussed for a recreation reason. It's more intended to preserve the, the wetlands. And, and it does also help or offer the additional benefit of providing a buffer into perpetuity.
Well, Nadine, this is Rick Smart again from the Southern York Land Trust. If the conservation easement is adjacent to our existing properties, right? Which is preserved, it could offer preservation and very limited, you know, passive recreation, basically, you know?
My only concern, I understand what you're saying. The only concern that we expressed is that because of our permit with the DEC, there are certain things that can occur and certain things that can't occur. So we, we need to be very cognizant of whatever our permit allows and make sure that we don't do anything to disturb that.
Right, and it depends how you write the conservation easement. So you can write stuff into it or you can restrict, either way.
Correct, within, within the confines of our, of our DEC permit.
Right.
Hey Byron, this is Doug from the board. I have a follow-up question for you or for Jason regarding the EAF. There's a comment in there regarding the removal of contaminated soils. I think about, I think it's, actually, I don't know the quantity, but I'm, I'm glad to see that we're removing contaminated soils from the site. Do you anticipate that the project would be removing all of the known contaminated soils? And how would you characterize what, what it is? Thank you.
Sure, Doug. So good question. Over the years, and, and if Marco's still with us, he can pipe in if I'm going wrong here. But over the years, certain fill materials have been brought onto the site, sorted on the site. I would characterize it as urban fill, Douglas. I, I think that's the, the term of art that is used. And not all of that urban fill is actually contaminated. All of the, and I should be clear on this statement, all of the contaminated urban fill that is located on the site currently, the project orange site will be removed as part of this project. And the remaining fill is not contaminated. So I think that, that should clearly answer your question that all the contaminated fill that's there is going to be removed. Again, in terms of the characterization, it's urban fill material. It's basically, you know.
Spoils from, you know.
Yeah. Spoils, generally speaking, if you look at the GeoTech report, you're looking at some metals that are in a higher concentration than unrestricted residential use. But interestingly enough, most of the borings onsite, you know, are, are below the commercial unrestricted commercial uses. So it's, but even so, we're still going to remove all of that urban fill as part of this project. That's one of the first steps that we're going to take once we start construction.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, this is. Byron, this is Kevin Porter from the board. I was curious, what can you tell me about the lead status of the building? And what are the general efficiency requirements you're meeting in regard to HVAC and lighting?
So this is not a, this is not going to be a lead certified building. Having said that, the design team is utilizing higher efficiency, as you mentioned, HVAC and, and and systems throughout the building. I think more importantly, if you're, if you're asking about overall sustainability measures, the building itself and the roof in particular has been designed to accommodate a rooftop solar array. The, the solar team for the client operates in a different organizational unit than the delivery folks. And so that part of the project is not necessarily moving forward at this point. But again, we have been told to design this building and therefore it is designed such that that entire roof you see in front of you can support a rooftop solar array. I think that you're probably looking at about a 750 KW array in terms of total size. So it's quite significant. In addition to that, the parking lots have been designed to accommodate electric charging stations throughout because it is the intent of the client to utilize electric vans, delivery vans for service at facilities like this one going forward. So in terms of the sustainability measures, I would say those are the two that, that are important to focus on.
Right, and you said you're not doing minimum efficiency for the HVAC. You're going to a higher level then?
I believe so. Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, Byron, listen, you're doing a good job filling in the board, but the other thing to it that's important to note is the warehouse facility has minimal to no AC in the facility of the warehouse. It's only in the office areas as well as heating conditions for the warehouse. The temperature, I think parameters are believed 50 degrees in the winter. And the, the intent for cooling is that the warehouse does not exceed 80 degrees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to close the, the hearing. May I have a, somebody to second that motion?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all. Thank you, Rileys and Gordon and the applicant, an excellent review of your, your project.
I do, I do have one question, Peter, regarding the subdivision.
Yes.
Lot one is also in the high tech district. Is that right?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah, it's also subject to the overlay.
It's, it's subject to the overlay, Steve, so they'll have to come back and it'll have to be approved by the town. All right, you're welcome. All right, we've got one more item. The, it's a concept site plan review for the Pinsky Law Office. Who do we have representing the Pinsky Law Office?
Right here, Craig Polhamus.
Okay, Craig. Is this a concept review? You know, there's a lot going on with this site. It's a business transitional. And the board has, you know, some concerns relative to the variances that would need to happen if it was built as you've been drawn, but present and the board will offer some, some comments relative to your proposal.
Okay, thank you very much, Peter, and good to be back before the board again. My name is Craig Polhamus, 114 East Genesee in Fayetteville. I'm the architect for this project. I worked with Zausmer Frisch, who is the design builder. With me tonight is Brad Pinsky, the owner, and Ed Keplinger, landscape architect with Keplinger Freeman Associates, who is the site designer. Our client, Brad Pinsky, recently purchased this building at 4311 East Genesee Street. The building was formerly a dentist's office. The owner wishes to locate his law offices to this location. This would be a relocation from the Wide Waters area where his office has been located for the last 12 years. Unlike, you know, typical law offices, the Pinsky Law Group represents fire districts, fire departments, and emergency medical service agencies among some towns, villages, and not-for-profits. They, this means that there has been and is expected to be very little traffic to and from the offices due to their specific clientele. There's only going to be four people working at this location with an occasional couple of client cars visiting their offices. Brad's here to speak to any questions regarding the traffic and frequency of visits. But as we look at the survey here, let me just go back one. The site is pretty challenging. The lot is less than 62 feet wide and 204 feet deep. The existing building sits within the setback limits of nine feet and 16 feet for side setbacks and 35 feet from the front property lines. Due to the existing non-conforming nature of the existing building, our design intent is to match the existing setbacks that currently exist. There's a well-developed evergreen screening to the rear of the lot, which abuts the residential district, and that would remain. Looking at the next sheet, want to advance one? Nick? Yeah, this is sheet Z1. This shows the proposed plan. You can see shaded area to the back of the building where we will essentially square off the building and make the change from the current 1,600 square feet roughly to about 2,000 square feet in area as proposed. The existing building, as we have discovered, has asbestos issues as well as some structural issues. And after a lot of consideration, it became clear that it was better to demo the existing structure and rebuild on its footprint. By filling in the existing cellar and lowering the floor elevation, we can eliminate the front handicap ramp. And we intend to also eliminate the large monument sign that's in the front yard. If you advance one more, Nick, you'll be able to see. Yeah, that's a photo of the existing building where you can see the, the handicap ramp that's in front, the large sign and pretty much how it sits on the site. It's, it's rather constricted. So basically, we are asking for your support in our application to the ZBA for relief in the setback requirements due to the nature of the site and existing conditions. We're also looking for a reduction in the required parking requirements. We're currently looking to maintain the parking that currently exists onsite. So if you advance one, Nick, we can see option, this is the proposed. I don't know why I have a block in front of my image, but we, we basically are looking to have a, a design that's more compatible with the area and appropriate to some of the other buildings nearby. The, we did look at some of the comments that have been put forward this week. One in terms of the nine-foot setback that would exist on the one side. If you advance one more image, you'll see where we've taken and reduced the footprint of the building. The side that the nine-foot setback would be is a retaining wall and a parking area beyond. While it's possible, the resulting floor plan, as we've looked at it, is functionally undesirable by the owner. And if you can go back, Nick.
Come on.
Yeah. Okay, there, that's fine. Basically, this is showing the rear of the property. We've also explored keeping the reduced side setback because if we reduced it to nine feet, that area to the side would be pretty much lost, unusable. We've also explored the idea of locating the handicap entrance to the rear of the property. This image shows a concrete ramp that would need to be used because of the grade change to navigate from the parking area up to the main floor plan or floor elevation. Doing this, we would lose one parking space where if we maintained the front accessible entrance, which would not be a ramp, but just an inclined walk, we would be able to retain that one parking space. Or the, with the proposed plan, we looked at providing a sidewalk that would go from front to back in order to get to that accessible entrance. So as we've looked at it, the handicap ramp to the rear does have some merit. It would obviously be a more cost, but you know, we would be open to exploring that. So essentially, this is the design we've come up with. And to explain this option and probably the site plan details, I kind of like at this point, turn it over to Ed Keplinger and he can review all of this in detail. And I'll be available for any questions you might have regarding the, the building, the architecture or the functionality.
Yeah, this is a site plan concept review, so we don't need a lot of detail, but go ahead.
If we go to just the plan view and zoom in, or actually on the left-hand side is just the context plan of the, the. of the the site plan with the ramp, and you get an understanding of the relationship of the building to the adjoining properties and to East Genesee Street. On the right is a is an enlarged site plan. If you could zoom into that. Here you can get an understanding of how the entrance to the facility would work with the the stairs that come up to the to the level. The state, the building floor elevation will be about two, two and a half feet higher than the parking lot. And then you could see the relationship of the ramp to the building and stairs. And we're gonna put an abundance of landscaping back there between the ramp levels and at the corner of the building. So that's my brief.
Front entrance accessible, Ed?
It is, yes. We're lowering the building elevation about twenty inches from where it is now. So that the ramp, all of the walks or that where it says ramp in front of the building, it's really not a ramp. It's a a four-point-eight percent sloping sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
It does meet ADA, but it does not need a railing. So the railing would go away in front of the building and also the the sign that's in the lawn area.
Could you refresh my what you'd said about parking and relative to the ratio and code and what it is proposed to be?
Okay, the code, okay, for parking. The code requires thirteen parking spaces. We have two thousand square feet of building at at one parking space per one hundred and fifty square feet. That's thirteen point one parking spaces. We're providing nine parking spaces, including one handicap.
How many employees in the building?
Four.
Four.
My one concern is, is if it is ever sold, what would be?
Hold on, four lawyers, four lawyers plus how many administrators?
Only four employees in there. There's four offices. There's no reception desk. There's no other administrative staff. Brad, if you're on, you could probably speak to that.
Yep, I'm on, thank you. We've, I've been in the town of DeWitt practicing law for more than twenty years. And I'll be here for probably another ten to fifteen if, you know, my health will take it that way. So we, for fourteen years in my firm, have only had four total employees. We have zero plans and under this plan, zero ability to have any more employees. I would like to say as to parking, all of our business is statewide. We represent very few clients specifically in Anadaga County. We do most of our time traveling, as the mileage on my car will prove out. But, you know, with only, there's only two lawyers and two staff. I don't think in our ten or twelve years I can remember we've ever had more than two or three guests in the, you know, in our office. So it's it's unlikely that at least in the next ten years, we're really ever to, you know, need more than frankly, six or seven parking spaces.
Yeah, I just, I worry always about the the next owner and what what use they're they're gonna have and and impact that they'll have on on parking. The building is beautiful. I mean, it's a considerable improvement. Board members, would you like to weigh in on any comments you have?
I think it's a pretty nice solution.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Doug. I would say the same thing. It's a it's a great improvement. I'm I'm certainly torn. It's a handsome building. The the neighboring buildings certainly have a little bit more modern, less residential feel to them, but
Right.
but it's a it is a handsome building. There is a, there's a pretty dilapidated site wall there on the west lot line. Is that on this property or is that on the neighboring property?
It's mostly on the neighboring property, as you can see in the survey.
It straddles the property line, but it is associated with the neighboring property and their parking lot.
And this is Brad Pinsky. We've we've written to the owner, not that I want to be that type of neighbor. We agree it is kind of a dilapidated wall. Some of it's already fallen onto our property. Shown on the survey, it starts and ends on theirs. There must have been some, I'll call it for lack of expertise, bulging at some point where there a lot is pushing onto ours. And, you know, we we'd obviously like to see them repair it, but there's nothing possibly in our control to make this happen. It's their wall, and we assume in the seventies when this parking lot went in, although we searched the town of DeWitt records, couldn't find anything. We assume that, you know, they they put it there in conjunction with their parking lot. Their their parking spaces are set well back, so, you know, we we offered to them, look, while we got demo equipment there, we'd even demo the wall for you if you'd repair it. But we, to date, haven't heard anything back. But again, it's it's not within our control to make any repairs to it.
Maybe Andy could.
My concern would be that it looks like you're infilling a portion of the the footprint on that west side.
That's correct.
Existing buildings. So if you're infilling and you're putting any sort of a frost wall or anything down, you're gonna be undermining the soil right up against that wall within close proximity. You're now five feet plus, you know, over dig.
Yeah.
Is there?
We've had our site contractor look at the property and he doesn't see that there would be a a major problem with that. We're far enough back that danger of of that is minimal.
But if you're if you're lowering the building another twenty inches, I'm looking at Google Maps right now. It looks like the grade comes to almost the meter channel, which is probably three feet above. If you go up on the other side, on the west side, somebody's gonna have to address a wall in there. Whether it's on the on the neighboring property, and if you're lowering grade and lowering this building down from Genesee Street, something is gonna have to be done to protect the tree that's on the left side.
Excuse me. Joe, Joe, let me interrupt for a second. Just if you if you're not talking, you, not you, Joe, but anybody else, could they mute their 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 sound so we don't get any of this back noise and we can hear people speaking?
So there's a pretty good-sized tree that's on the neighboring property. And you look, and I'm looking on Google Maps right now, that the grade comes almost, by the looks of it, to the bottom of the windows. And I think to Nathan's point, that, you know, I I don't think it's just the neighboring property's problem with a wall. I think you're gonna have a problem with your side as well in creating a problem that needs to be addressed on on the west side of this building. From what I can see on Google Maps, I haven't been there to look at it personally, but by the looks of it, it's you know, you you have three feet in there already. That's that's a that's a problem.
Do you wanna address that, Ed, or should I?
Yeah, I think it's something we'll have to look at. We may have to build the grade up a little bit along that west building wall and maybe Craig and his team will have to consult with a structural engineer to get a recommendation on how to handle that condition.
Yeah, because you could just extend though, if you're demoing the building or whatever, you could extend that wall up and use it as a retaining wall so that you maybe can alleviate the the retaining wall on the neighboring.
That's what it. Yeah, I could. I could see that where maybe the grade's a foot or two higher against that wall in the end.
Yep, yep, I agree. But I I don't wanna, I don't think we should just say, well, it's the neighbor's problem. I think it's a combination of both, you know, the house being lower or your proposed building being lower, quite a bit lower than his grade is as it is right now.
I I think the grade along the building will be unchanged. It's just the floor elevation will be lowered because we will be a slab on grade as opposed to a wood frame over a cellar. So that that's where some of that twenty inches is coming from. But we will certainly make sure that we're not gonna exasperate a problem that exists. And just want to separate the foundation issue from the retaining wall issue. They're really two separate items, but we can address both.
Well, you might be able to address the foundation is what I'm saying, I guess.
On the retaining wall that's in disrepair, Andy, can you do anything from a code?
Yeah, I can. Actually, this is kind of a common practice is that, and it's and it's unfortunately, it's something that we have to contend with over the years, but it's been common practice to put retaining walls on property lines. And for for reasons I really don't understand, it's never worked out to anybody's benefit because it really kind of creates animosity between the two landlords. You know, this this is obviously an elevated area between this project and the project to the west. And obviously, the retaining wall is necessary for the project to the west to maintain their parking. They do have, they were, up until recently, they had some landscaping that was in that buffer area between the parking and the retaining wall, which is really only about three feet. That has been removed because it it became mature and was starting to compromise that retaining wall. And the owner to the west has removed that landscape buffer area, the tree area. It's it's an unfortunate situation when you get to the to the point where you're so close to the property lines with this and to try to mitigate any kind of a slope or grade change. But it is what it is, and I and I think that this project has has tried to implement the the best to their ability on their property. Those grade changes and the landscaping buffering between that with within the constraints that they have within their property boundaries. I do, I can tell you that there is a proposed mixed-use occupancy for the property to the west, which is going to be potentially residential and business, which has not come before this board and is really just exploratory at this point. But that site plan, if it perpetuates, will come before this board for that process.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Any other questions? Again, concept review.
How much closer to the street is your proposed building than the existing building?
It's the same distance, the the twenty-two feet, five inches.
So the the front wall of the new building is the same as the old building?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So. Did you look at options to try and align this building to some of its neighbors and towards that existing front yard setback?
If we do that, we will be pushing. Oh, go ahead, Craig.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it it's kind of hard to determine except on Google Earth, but it it looked like the neighbors were probably, you know. Oh, what was that? I'm trying to look at my notes here. Thirty, thirty-eight.
Say one to two car spaces further back.
Yeah, yeah. So we would be able to move the building back, but it would be at the direct loss of parking space, which is already, as we know, limited.
So Ed or whoever's taking the lead on this with the applicant, you know, we're happy to schedule a work session or whatever works best for you.
I I guess we'd like to see you move it back a little and see what the exact impact is. It looks to be maybe one parking space.
Yes, if we move the building back.
In regards to kind of.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Craig.
Okay, I was just gonna say, if we move the the building back, that's one parking space. If we put the ramp in the back, that's an additional parking space. If we elongate the building and have the same program space, it would be yet one more parking space. So the question is, from thirteen to the current ten, can we go down to nine or eight to satisfy those requirements? The the site is just not conducive to much change.
Understood.
And Steve, I'm going, Steve, I want to go to the to two points or to two moves down the road. If, as Andy mentioned, that property to the west has potential to become in a mixed-use development, and we have the overlay and the potential of, you know, keeping things up close to the street in a redevelopment, if we're all of a sudden now pushing this back, is there a concern that, you know, maybe it gets overshadowed at some point down the road? In the into the future, I understand, but I'm okay having it up close to the street in its current existing position.
I I think it's fine in this position. But I and I don't think I'd want the mixed-use building to be really any closer to the street.
I agree. I'd like, the the mixed-use building has the opportunity, if it gets redeveloped, to bring it into lines architecturally with some treatments to to kind of reinforce the that that this building is sort of the visual link to the residential district to the west and not hodgepodge. And also, the my next question is about the big mature tree right on the corner. I don't know whose that is, if it's on this property or the west. That is the last mature tree that defines the edge of the on-plot of the mature maples running up Genesee Street. Whatever we do, I want to make sure we don't start violating its root structures and have that come down.
That tree is on the adjoining property, and it is actually out tight to the property line. So the our impacts would be in the in line with the existing foundation that's there now. So unless the roots dig or, you know, in the foundation area, we shouldn't be impacting the the root system.
Yeah, we just want to be careful about that, just in case.
Okay. What what, so depending upon where this ends, I guess you've got some good input from the board. And what you're recommend, you'll need a recommendation from us, so you're gonna need to come back at the next meeting, and if we need a work session, we can do that in order for you to make a, for us to make a recommendation to the ZBA.
Okay, so we're really looking at the August?
No, the we have a meeting early ninth or whatever, July. We got a meeting on the, yeah, the ninth of July, and I think that the
On the twenty-third.
And the twenty-third. So we're not in August, but we can make a recommendation.
Right. That would be for the August meeting then.
Pardon?
That would be for the August meeting.
Yes, for a final, potentially a final approval.
ZBA. August ZBA.
Oh.
The ZBA application's due next week. For July.
Ed, can either you or Craig take two seconds and just define the variances that you'll be going after?
Yeah, yes, I can. If we look at the west property line, the side yard setback on this property line is nine feet is required. Actual would be five. There would be a four-foot variance. On the east property line, sixteen feet would be required. Actual is fourteen point three feet. So a one foot seven or one point seven foot variance would be required. At the front yard, thirty-five feet is required. Actual is twenty-two point five, twenty-two feet, five inches. A twelve-foot, seven-inch variance would be required. And then parking, the code requires thirteen parking spaces. We would be providing nine with the ramp scheme.
It's the the side yards, the front yard, and the parking.
Yep.
And in this particular case, the front yard and the east property or the east side yard, those are existing conditions? Or are you building into and extending those?
These, these are all existing, so they're the the what's there now for setbacks is what will be there in the future with a give or take a couple inches.
So you're not.
Guess not a rebuild.
Yeah, you're just, you're taking that five, you're taking the five foot and extending it straight back on the west. You're taking that fourteen or fifteen point four seven and extending it straight back on the east. You're not making it any worse than it actually is.
No, we'll square it. Yeah, our plan is since we have the opportunity to for new construction, we would square it up to the property lines.
Okay. And then the front yard is the front yard because that's the existing front of the building?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a new building, but it exists.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just, I'm wondering, I just want to make sure we're not making a bad condition worse, that we're just taking the existing condition and extending it straight back.
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm more comfortable with the project, and I did look up the dates, and there's a July twentieth ZBA meeting. So if we make a recommendation to approve those variances, we could make that on the ninth, and you could go in front of the ZBA on July twentieth.
We would just have to get our application in on Monday or Tuesday, right, Andy?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I think you've got a, you know, I think you got the sense of the board that we like the project and we'll, you know, like to see a little bit more detail, but that we, I think, let me just ask the board, I'm not looking, I can't look at them. Are you comfortable with this and, and a potential positive recommendation to the ZBA to support their variances?
I am.
I am.
I am, I am, yep.
There you go.
Great, very good. All right.
Thank you for your time and inspiration.
Yeah.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Challenging times and appreciate everybody's forbearance on these. This was a big meeting, and I think the next couple will be big as well. Could you, somebody have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
And who's the?
Nathan.
Nathan, thank you, Nathan. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
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 All right. Thanks, you all, enjoy your weekend, stay safe, and we'll get together in a week and a half.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.
They were streaming this, so be sure you turn it off.